Counsel, if you will come to order. It is 7:02 PM. We do have a quorum. Mayor Protim Lamont is not here, but we do expect him shortly. He is here just now. And...
We can start.
And in just a moment, I'm going to ask everyone to stand, and I will lead us in an invocation for this evening. And then remain standing, and you'll be led in pledges to the US flag and the Texas flag, and follow along with Counsel Member Philip Schaffner. If you would, please stand.
Gracious God, our Creator and Sustainer, we are indeed grateful for the blessings of life that you give to all of us, and especially the blessings that we receive by living in a wonderful country that is free to worship and to plan and to control our destiny. We ask for your blessings upon our deliberation tonight. May we be led by your wisdom and by your insight, and may we give the honor and the praise unto thee, in Jesus' name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
You may be seated. So I noticed some of you knew that pledge well. Must have been students, and said it faster than we did. Well, I welcome everyone this evening. We have a couple of workshop items, and I'm going to, without objection from the council, move those to a little later so that we can go ahead and begin to recognize people that have come today. So I'm going to move us to citizens' presentations. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on any matter, whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any presentations made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The council will hear presentations on specific agenda items prior to the council addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes, or a time limit determined by the mayor or presiding officer. To speak during this item, you must complete the speaker's form that indicates the topics of your statement. Topics of presentation should be limited to matters over which the council has authority. Holly, has anyone signed up to speak this evening?
No, sir.
All right. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council? All right. We will then move to our consent agenda, items three to six. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Counsel, does anyone wish to remove any of the items? Hearing none, I will read the items. Item three, consider and take appropriate action regarding the minutes dated March 24, 2014. Consider and take appropriate action regarding the minutes dated January 13, 2015. Consider and take appropriate action regarding the minutes dated February 24, 2015. Consider and take appropriate action regarding financial and variance report dated February 2015. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items three, four, five, and six.
Do you have a second?
Second.
I do have a motion by Mayor Protim Lamont, and a second by Council Member Reed. All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. No opposed, it is unanimous. Our regular session agenda, item number seven, recognition of Chuck and Diane Hall for their years of service provided to the town of Trophy Club, the presentation of a certificate of resignation to Chuck. So just a minute, I have a few things to...
Recognition.
And a plaque, so we'll have something here. Well, I did have something. Where'd it go? Here again. So a little history. Chuck, where are you? I've lost you. You're way in the back. So Chuck and Diane, come up to the front row. I know you're back there. And I won't make you stand during this, but if you would, take a seat. Chuck and Diane both attended Purdue University in Indiana, and there it's where they met. They married soon after graduation, and as of April have been partners, best friends, and married for 47 years. That alone should get a certificate, shouldn't it? We lived in the Midwest, not far from Chicago. Diane had a varied career in advertising, law, human resources, and public affairs. Chuck graduated in an electrical engineering and worked in development of new systems for general telephone and electronics. In 1995, GTE Labs was sold and their headquarters relocated to Los Colinas. That's when they moved to Texas, and his responsibilities changed to project management. They looked for houses for over a month, viewing over 150 homes, while Diane sold the snow blowers. I was fixing to say, she sold the snow blowers. Okay, you are from Indiana. Okay, you didn't want to bring those down here? She sold the snow blowers and wrapped things up in Indiana. Then a new agent took me to Trophy Club. The homes here have a great variety. There are hills and trees, just what we wanted, and within two days, we had found our home and community. Our neighbors welcomed us into the community, and we became honorary Texans. In 2000, we retired and moved to a new phase of life. The mud newsletter arrived with the bill and an ad for someone to record town council meetings. I interviewed and explained that we would not be in town all the time, as we planned on some travel. The manager said, "Fine, and we can work with you, and that wouldn't be a problem." They started in 2001, and Chuck has served for four mayors, and one mayor twice, in two sections. And all of the time back in our audiovisual room, and so most of the time, no one knew he was there, and had the challenge of trying to deal with the technology. As he said, when council changed, someone would speak, and he would try to figure out who was speaking so he could get the camera on them. So just to let everybody know, it wasn't that easy to get that done. Looking back, they realized that this was a track to smoothly move into full retirement, and it was a great help. With the consideration of flexible hours, a very considerate and flexible Trophy Club IT department, town staff, and council, it was fun to work here. So I have a certificate that says, and I'm going to bring it down there in just a second, presented to Chuck Hall in recognition of your dedication and excellent audiovisual service from 2001 to 2015 for the town of Trophy Club, Texas. From all of us on the town council and all of the citizens that watched all of those shows, and I'm sure y'all are going to go home and watch one of these council meetings sometime, aren't you, that are so excited, or listen to the audio, we thank you for your service. Let's congratulate him. April is going to take a couple of pictures, so I'm going to come down for presentation. And counsel, if you want to come with me, if you want to file down there. Let's go. One way or the other.
Congratulations, Chuck. Thank you.
Where do you want us for the picture?
Right up there would be perfect.
Yes.
First of all, it really is our pleasure to recognize you. Years that you've served and made sure that everything happened appropriately are valuable to this town. And we hate to see you go. Seldom knew that you were necessarily back there unless I said, "Chuck, are we ready?" And the lights would blink, or you would wave at me. So on behalf of the town of Trophy Club, we thank you for your years of service. Let's get a picture.
Ryland, I can't see you.
Move around, everybody can get a scene.
All right. One, two.
Perfect?
Thank you.
You absolutely can, but you're going to have to come to the microphone. You know that, right?
I'm just going to say a couple of words, and that is, once we got cameras with joysticks so we could control them, Diana became the joystick operator, and it was hard to get her away from them. It was like trying to take the remote away from a guy. The other thing that I want to say is, it's been a pleasure, and I am just so grateful that everyone here volunteers and makes the extreme effort towards this town, especially our town council, and all the people that work on committees, groups, and so forth to support this community. It's what makes it great, and I encourage all of you to do the same thing. There's one other thing, and then I'm going to leave, and that is, I've never been able to leave before the executive session, which sometimes goes till 2:00 in the morning, and I'm going to say goodbye, and we're going to leave right now. So, thank you.
Chuck, just a minute. Before you leave, the officer's back there. Would you please escort him to the front row and make sure he stays through? No, I'm just kidding you. Thanks, Chuck. Appreciate it.
We're not going until 2:00 this morning, are we, Mr. Moore?
No.
No, we're not going to go to 2:00. Item number eight, receive presentation from Byron Nelson High School Virtual Enterprise International Students, VEI, discussion and presentation of certificate of recognition for the group's achievement as the first team in Texas to advance to the national and global competitions for high school business management programs. Counsel, I believe they have a presentation first, so I'll let you make your presentation, if that's what you're going to do, students. And if you do come to the microphone, please introduce yourselves. Thank you.
Before they begin, thank you very much, Mayor Sanders and members of the council. For everybody that may not be familiar with this team, this is a Byron Nelson High School Business Competition Team. They will be competing April 12 at Nationals. They've been competing with 8,500 other high schools across the world. They are the first-year firm to ever make it to Nationals. It's unheard of. What you will see, what they're holding today, is the six top-three awards that they received at Regionals. The presentation that you will see is their company that they created from complete scratch, their hard work and their dedication. What you will hear, it may sound a bit overpriced, is because everything that is happening happens in a virtual enterprise, in a wholesale marketplace, where they set their own prices, and they set their own market shares and such, and they compete with these 8,500 different companies, so...
Antonio, would you introduce yourself?
Oh, yes. I'm Antonio Binos. I'm the facilitator and coordinator for this team, and I'm very blessed to have had the chance and opportunity to teach these wonderful kids.
All right, thank you. Please go to the microphone if you can when you speak, so we get it recorded. Thank you.
Move these this way. Yes, face this way, so you can face both of the audience. This way. Don't give the back 20 body.
Okay. Are you good? Okay, well, I'm going to go ahead and start. Hello, everyone. Thank you very much for being here today and taking the time to listen to us. My name is Ashlyn Murphy, and I'm the Chief Sales Officer for Life's Purity. We're a small-town, organic tea brewery based out of Trophy Club, Texas, with big dreams, hopes, and aspirations, not only to provide the highest-quality product to our customers, but to also make an impact on this world. With me, I have a team of socially responsible, passionate individuals, representing not only a team, but a family of 21 tea-loving people. We were fed up with having to sacrifice taste and our health to find an alternative to tasteless water and sugary drinks. This is our family.
Hi, I'm Samantha Mullins, and I'm the Chief Marketing Officer.
Hi, I'm Hannah Rickett, and I'm the Chief Creative Officer.
Hi, I'm Bianca Santana, and I'm the Chief Operating Officer.
Hi, I'm Scott Travis, and I'm the Chief Strategic Officer and Helping Us Out with Technology, aside, I was saying. Like Ashlyn said, Life's Purity began as a necessity to find a more healthy, wholesome, and nutritious alternative to tasteless water and sugary drinks. We wanted a beverage with all of the taste, without all the fake ingredients and artificial sweeteners. Through extensive primary and secondary research, we discovered that there is a large demand for us in the VEI wholesale marketplace. As outlined in this chart, our SWOT analysis helped us further explore our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. Our marketing industry analysis has indicated that as of today, we are the leading brand in organic beverages. We have identified our direct and indirect competition, as shown here. Our direct competition is Jordalius Organic Tea and Coffee. Our indirect competition is Berry Light and Wired Coffee. Nobody really offers a beverage quite like purity. Taking this information, we discovered our target market. Our primary target market, which we labeled proactive company, are VEI companies with 10 or more employees, operating within the VEI wholesale marketplace in any industry other than the beverage sector. Our secondary target market, which we labeled Cindy and Josh, are VEI companies with VEI employees working within VEI companies with an age range of 16 to 18, with an annual salary of $45,000 to $100,000, seeking a healthier, more nutritious alternative to tasteless water and sugary drinks. Our target market is located in the most populated areas, as shown here. We've had great success. We are the leading brand in organic beverages. So far, we are leading the movement, we're making it happen. I'll now have Bianca talk to you about our structure.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. Here at Life's Purity, we currently hold the legal status of a NEST corporation. Our mission is to provide and deliver refreshing, organic, ready-to-drink teas made with only the most natural and wholesome ingredients, basically the way Mother Earth intended them to be. As for our vision, we strive to become the leading brand of healthy, organic beverages worldwide. As you can see, we have a tier-level management system that allows for us to perform in the most efficient way possible. Because of this, we are able to maintain a safe and fun environment for all of our employees, or as we call ourselves, our family. Our senior leadership is currently broken up into three separate groups, followed by our VPs and team members. Much like our farmers and customers, our employees are always top priority. That is why we have set in place an open communication system that encourages both personal and professional development. In fact, our human resources department has done an outstanding job in advocating and implementing a workplace revolved around a family-friendly culture. However, these practices are further outlined in our employee handbook. But enough about the corporate structure, let's talk about our tea. Hannah?
Thank you, Bianca. Our tea is organic, which means we use only the most wholesome ingredient, free of pesticides and damaging chemicals. Our tea is also non-GMO, meaning that none of the ingredients are genetically modified. They come straight from Mother Earth, right into the bottle. We are also fair trade certified, because we care about our farmers. Through this global certification, we can provide better wages and support better farming practices to increase the standard of their everyday lives. Our tea is also kosher and gluten-free. In addition to this, what truly makes Life's Purity different from any other beverage company out there is that in our tea, instead of using artificial sweeteners or even just cane sugar, we use pure, raw honey. Samantha will now talk to you about our current line of organic teas.
Thank you, Hannah. We currently have eight different organic teas, with our two signature flavors being our green tea and our black tea. Our black tea is a delicious blend of healthy, yet flavorful, ingredients that will set your senses free. And our green tea is naturally infused with rich organic ingredients and spring water that work to relieve daily stress. We are, since the month of February, we have released six new bottles of tea. These teas include an unsweetened version of our green and black tea, a BB tea, a blueberry tea, a cranberry tea, and a lemonade tea. We buy most of our ingredients in bulk, and through proprietary heating and cooling method, we're able to streamline our products and our process in a very lean and efficient way. I'll now have Ashlyn talk to you about the process and the company as a whole.
Thank you, Samantha. This diagram gives you a bird's-eye view of our product description and processes further explained in our business plan. A big challenge starting as a brand-new firm in Texas, where there's currently just one other firm, made it a bit challenging to break even in the beginning. But after cutting costs, adjusting salaries, streamlining our process, and solving a shipping situation, we were able to establish a very realistic break-even point, around $82,000, which equates to about 12,000 bottles of tea. Our cash flow, therefore, increased, which allowed us to drop prices and increase profits. Unfortunately, in the month of December, we're in the process of switching from a cash to an accrual method of accounting. We also experienced some technology difficulties, not being able to access our portal or email for about three weeks. Since January, we have fixed all of that, and our financial plan now reflects our new financial strategy. As a matter of fact, since January, we have had an 11% increase in sales, which allows to be truly profitable by the end of May. As of today, we have made more than $400,000. Shipping was another big challenge for us. Thankfully, we were able to secure a partnership with a third-party logistics company that picks up our product and stores it in their climate warehouse revers. Here's a breakdown of our pricing strategy.
Like Ashlyn said, after the month of January, our pricing strategy was revised to allow the same price for all eight bottles of tea. As you can tell, we've accounted for everything into our price per bottle, and the cost to produce our tea is $1.37, and it is sold at a retail price of $6.85 per bottle. After conducting extensive research and based on the current demand, as well as the economic environment of the wholesale marketplace, we have strategically set our profit margins. For our six-pack, our price markup is 400%, and for our 60-pack, our price markup is 350%. After conducting real-world and industry research, we saw that tea in our category had an average price markup of 300%. But based on the economic environment of the wholesale marketplace, as mentioned before, we were able to raise our price markup to better suit our financial goals, while keeping the best interests of our shareholders and our customers. Within our pricing strategy, we've taken potential risk factors into consideration. Even though tea is recession-proof, as stated in the latest economic and financial journals, we have a contingency plan and budget set in place towards our product, our brand, and our shareholders, if need be. This has not been the case in over 20 years. I'll now have Hannah and Scott talk to you about our brand.
Thank you, Sam. Our bottles and packaging are both aesthetically pleasing and clearly convey simplicity and quality. The integrated marketing campaign is cost-effective, measurable, and targeted. We have taken strategic steps to make sure that our brand truly reflects our mission, vision, and core values. Our logo, for instance, was carefully crafted with our mission in mind. The three water drops represent our company, the farmers, and the consumer, and how Life's Purity brings them all together. The three leaves represent how tea is organic, non-GMO, and fair trade certified. Our e-commerce website, ve purity.com, clearly shows everything from who we are to how we became that company today. With the increase in search engine optimization, SEO, through the use of our ads and blogs, we are able to drive more traffic to our website.
In order to create awareness for our brand, we use advertisements and promotions through our social media. We use apps such as Twitter and YouTube to really connect with our target market. Along with advertisements, promotions were used to not only give customers great deals, but to be able to track the level of traffic being pushed to our website. Finally, we secured a partnership with LifeStraw. LifeStraw is a nonprofit company that uses a filtration straw that allows people to drink from places they can't normally drink from, such as rivers, streams, and even muddy water. For every bottle of purity that's sold, 33 cents goes towards LifeStraw. For every 60 bottles we sell, a LifeStraw is donated to a country in need.
Thank you, guys. As you can see, what starts an adventure seeking an alternative to tasteless water and sugary drinks has turned into reality. Thanks to a wonderful group of people who care about what they do and who they do it for, we were able to brew socially responsible tea company that cares about its farmers, employers, customers, and the world. We are very happy to be here sharing our company and our vision with you. We hope you enjoyed our presentation, and we thank you for your time. At this moment, we would like to take any questions you may have. Thank you.
Counsel, let's give them some tough questions. Greg? Well, we knew that Greg would ask a question.
Absolutely. Well, two things. Where in the New York City area will the event be held?
The event is actually at the Microsoft location in Manhattan. We are actually staying in Chelsea, though.
Okay. I'm going to give you a little advice.
Whether you asked for it or not.
I was born and raised in New York City, and sometimes that city can be very intimidating. But you have to remember something, that you're going to see thousands of people walking around, and they may seem cold and aloof. The reality is that walking in Manhattan is a mode of transportation. Picture yourself walking or driving on 114. You wouldn't drive in the wrong direction. You wouldn't stop the car and say to somebody behind you, "Hi, how you doing?" Or you wouldn't expect them to say, "How's your family? How's Uncle Walter doing? How could I get to the Empire State Building?" So just bear that in mind. And the other thing is, half the people are tourists. They might not even speak English, and you don't understand what you're saying. So, but have fun. It's a great city. It's the greatest city in the world. The only problem is, you can't retire there. Much easier to retire in Texas.
Anybody else have questions for him?
No, but I hope you paid close attention that all of the tea was on a pallet, so...
Are you angling for some service?
Philip is the pallet king of the great Southwest, in case anyone was wondering. Can you guys give us just a little bit of background on what VEI is and how this marketplace functions, and to what degree the things that you're showing us are physically real versus virtual? Because I think it would help set the context for what it is you've done here in this project.
Well, to make it plain and simple, VEI is the most realistic in-classroom business experience you could possibly have. As you can see, we have every single aspect of what a company needs to bring a product up to the consumer. And what it does is it allows students to have full experiences in branches, in leadership positions as employees, allows them to really understand how to create a product, and how to develop it, how to manage and work with students, and what another aspect of... Another aspect of what it allows us to do is, it allows us to really be able to work with other people. That's one of the main things I've learned personally from it, is being able to problem-solve with another person, and being able to work as a group, as a team, or like we said, as a family.
Y'all mentioned in your presentation some obstacles that occurred. Email, I think, was one. Might have been a shipping issue or something like that. Are those obstacles that are given to you by your instructors at school, or those obstacles that you came up with yourself? Are curveballs thrown to you during this process of things that come up?
Well, actually, the economy and the way things work within the classroom is all created by ourselves and other companies. No, nothing is stimulated within it or put into it. Everything that happens within the program, within the classroom, like I said, happens because of us and other companies.
But like, things like technology, just because of the school district and the Wi-Fi that we experience, and the blocks that students have on the Wi-Fi, but things like the shipping situation, it's just a real company. We had to figure out how to ship the product virtually, technically, to places like California and New York from Texas. Because we are, other than the Northwest team, we're the only firm in Texas.
Any other questions?
Very impressive.
Very impressive. Does the audience have any questions?
I would just like to say, that is one of the best business presentations I've ever heard. At any age, it was great.
The forecast was they made $4 million. Is that what the deal is? All right, I got one more question up here, I think.
Well, two things. How old do you have to be to serve on EDC? That's Economic Development Corporation. The other thing I noticed, you said, "When you ran into a problem, you cut costs and salaries." You will do very well in the private sector. Not so much in the public sector.
All right. So, in recognition of outstanding achievements, including winning six awards at the regional competition, becoming the first team in Texas to achieve, to advance to the Nationals, and competing in the Global Business Challenge, business plan competition, and international trade show at the International Youth Business Summit in New York City, on behalf of the Town Council of Trophy Club and all the citizens here that are proud of you, congratulations, and want to present you with this plaque. So we're going to come around and get a few pictures. So counsel, once again.[1782.54] [applause]
Tall's in the back? There you go, that way we can all get in line.
Stand next to the tall guy.
Sorry.
All right, so who's going to receive the plaque?
Give it to Coach B.
All right.
Coach B, get up here.
See there, that's great, if they do that. All right, so let's get a picture. Can y'all spread a little bit? It's right here. So I don't want to block anybody in the picture, okay? So, can you get everybody? Tell me if you can, okay.
I don't see Philip.
Everybody smile. Did you get the plaque over the podium?
Yes.
Congratulations to all of you. Speak louder. Two people stand in the audience, if you can get everyone. See, the CEO, did y'all get that? The CEO sat back and let them...
Guys, we've got water bottles for you. You're welcome.
A pallet company or a pallet hauler?
Yeah, one of these trucks, pickup trucks.
Yeah, this one is, this one is. This is no sugar.
All the GMOs?
One final note about this presentation that you saw and what Byron Nelson High School put together. This was a pilot program. You can see it did very well, and the program's going to move from Byron Nelson High School to Eaton next year. So it'll go to a different location, different high school, maybe bigger, at least in the sense of size than Byron Nelson, which is hard to imagine. But congratulations to all of you and all the parents. Thank you for coming out tonight to the presentation. And April fourteenth, is that the date? All right, so we expect some tweets, some Facebook posts, and some emails with pictures about all of this, all right? So congratulations, thank you very much for coming.
Then can somebody print them out and deliver them?
Y'all are welcome to stay the remainder of the meeting, but I recognize you may not want to. So yes, they need to tear down, so we'll take a few-minute break while they get a chance to kind of organize their stuff before we go forward. So counsel will be in recess for five minutes at seven thirty-five. So if you will come back to order, it is seven thirty-eight. We are back from recess. We just finished the presentation from the VEI students. Without objection, I'm going to move down the agenda a little bit further, and we'll still come back to those first items. Item number nine, recognition of members of town staff for services provided to the town during the winter weather days and discussion of same. Stephen, I know we've got some, some other people here tonight. Would you introduce some, have them come up? And then people maybe that aren't here that were involved in some of that effort, you can mention them also.
Absolutely. We have almost, well, first, let me lead off by saying, thank you, counsel, for the opportunity to recognize our employees and the service that they provide each and every day, but also during instances where there's inclement weather or disaster situations. Obviously, police and fire get a lot of recognition for that, and they do a lot, and they're here twenty-four-seven. But there's also employees that work for various departments that we deem as critical employees when there is such situations, like ice, snow, any type of, we've had tornadoes, those types of things, where we've called them in, and they've been here and left their families, even when we're closed, to make sure that the town is safe and that the employees, when they come to work, are, are coming to a safe environment. And I, this is an opportunity for us to recognize those employees who, you know, watch over the town, watch over the staff, watch over the council, the volunteers and the citizens, the businesses. It's a really a great opportunity, and, and I can't thank them enough for what they do each and every day. So I want to make sure that I get the folks who are here and recognize them. From the fire department, I, I think we had a couple of shifts between the ice, but tonight is A-shift, right? And tonight, they're going to be, we're recognizing A-shift for the entire fire department, and with that, we have Captain Shane Beck, Driver-Operator Sean Garrett, paramedic, firefighter/paramedic Dwayne Bone, oh, Boone, sorry, and firefighter/paramedic Matthew Tackett. And from the police department, we have Lieutenant Shields, we have Officer Brian Gluck, and Officer, oh, Beetler, Edward Beetler, Ed Beetler, sorry, drew a blank, and then Sergeant Wes Tyler. From the streets department, we have Ed Hilton, Raul Cordero, or Peanut, and Isaac, I don't think Isaac's here tonight. And then from parks department, we have Sergio Vargas, Tony Hara Mio, and Adam is here, but we have another person, Jorge Guzman, who is not here this evening, I didn't see him, that, that all provided service. And this may be either patrolling. We had, at one point, on the first day, we had a, a moving truck that was jackknifed on Indian Creek that we had to try to get unstuck. They're out there sanding the intersections, clearing the sidewalks in front of the public buildings, trying to get those hotspots in towns. When they find a, a person who was sliding out and couldn't get traction, they pull over, try to get them going and, and back on their way in a safe, in a safe and efficient manner. So if they would come up, I'd just like to recognize them and shake their hand. Mayor?
Y'all come up. [applause]
Should move y'all's seats out there. Or give you a break in this thing, yeah?
You know what? Hold on. Two people that I need to make sure are two chiefs, Danny Thomas and Chief Patrick Arata. They provide the leadership for the public safety, and they also are instrumental during emergency situations, whether it's ice, snow, wind, hail, whatever. They're always on duty with these folks. They provide emergency management, and they're a big part of our leadership team within our town, so thank you, guys.
Y'all come up here on the stage. Come on up here. Taller guys in the back, shorter guys up front like me. Yeah, I know. Some of us are shorter, it's way better.
It's not going to be a back row.
They're not. Not going to be the back row. I love it. Garrett can be in the back row, right?
Get back, get back.
Philip can be in the back row. Adam, come down, Adam. You were a spot, right? We get everybody in our picture. Now, those of you, here. All right, can, all right, those of you who are kind of in the back, make sure you're in between so we can get you in a picture. All right, everybody. There you go.
What are you doing?
Now we're not going to get you. Am I in it? Am I in it anymore? No. Thanks so much. Appreciate everything you did during that time. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Going on the cover of the calendar, Adam. Yeah.
That's right, don't show. Don't show. He'd need to have like a, some sort of sign like...
Oh, don't worry, I'll photoshop it.
Thank you very much.
I went through the budget.
Depends how they write the law.
Financials.
No, he said he had nothing to do, he even went through the financials.
Oh, yeah. It's just a question of where you can carry it. Is it going to be restricted like it is now under concealed carry, or is it going to have the same restrictions?
You didn't want everybody to wait.
Because it's going to have colleges now, they're going to be able to carry.
I know, and that was one of the things I was going to talk about.
Which has previously been off limits, so...
All right, counsel. Item number ten, consider and take appropriate action regarding a proclamation of the Town of Trophy Club during April fifteenth, twenty fifteen, as Arbor Day and Trophy Club. I'll recognize Councilmember Perro to read the proclamation and for a motion.
Town of Trophy Club Proclamation Number Two Zero One Five Days Zero Six, a proclamation of the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, to recognize April twenty-fifth, twenty fifteen, as Arbor Day, recognizing that twenty fifteen is the one hundred and forty-third anniversary of the holiday of Arbor Day, and providing an effective date. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas twenty fifteen is the one hundred and forty-third anniversary of the holiday, and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, now therefore be it proclaimed by the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, Section One, in the Town of Trophy Club, the mayor and council urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and Section Two, the mayor and council urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations, passed and approved by the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, this twenty-fourth day of March, twenty fifteen. And considering that for the past ten years, the Town of Trophy Club has been certified and designated as Tree City, this is a very appropriate proclamation to make, and I motion that the council pass this unanimously.
Do you have a second? Tim Kurtz, seconds? Any discussion? All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. No opposed, it is unanimous.
Mr. Mayor, if I will, I think...
If you will?
Yes. On behalf of the council, we would like to welcome back Mr. Stephen Glickman.
Stephen, welcome back.
Yeah, what a picture.
As you can tell, this group is a little nuts, I think. Okay. Item number eleven, presentation from Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number One, General Manager Jennifer McDiott, regarding Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, TCEQ, rules and violations, and discussion of same. Jennifer, would you take the podium, please? And I think you have a presentation for us.
Yes, I do, and I will work on getting that up, and want to say thank y'all for having me. I want to point out something I noticed tonight. I think this is about the third or fourth time that I've been invited to come and speak to the council, right after a very smart group of BNHS students. And I just want to say that if you're trying to prove that I'm not as smart as a twelfth-grader, point made. I get it. Every time, it's been an exceptional group, and I hate to have to follow them, so... But I wanted to come tonight and talk a little bit about the district. We did get a notice of violation from the TCEQ. This was related to, we, originally, the TCEQ came out to the wastewater plant responding to a citizen's complaint, a citizen's odor complaint. And when they came out, one of the things that they noticed was that our mechanical bar screen was, was down, and it was actually time for our three-year inspection anyway. So they let us know that they were going to come back later in the week and do the full-blown inspection. And so they did. And so, when the, when the TCEQ comes out and does this inspection of the wastewater plant, it's usually about every two or three years, and they look at the, the past two to three years of all of your records, all of your documentation, they look back from the, the previous time that they did an inspection. So as they looked through our records, they found some things that, although they were reported, when they do the inspection, they write them up as an alleged violation. So I want to go through first the things that were, when they left the, the plant, they were outstanding, and what we've done to correct those issues. All of the other remaining things in my presentation are, were resolved at the time that they, they came out. All right, the first item was that our mechanical bar screen was inoperable, and I like to compare this mechanical bar screen to my seventy-two Mercury Monarch that I drove in college. Over time, I replaced every part to the car, and it still didn't run very well. That's about how this mechanical bar screen has been since I've worked here. I just don't think there's anything left we can replace on it. But at the time that they came out, the, there was a gearbox that was down. We had it on order for about nine weeks. It took about nine weeks for us to get it in. It did finally get here, and it was put into, repaired the, the day that it was received, and the mechanical bar screen is now operational. They asked that we send a video of it operating, and that, that is what we did. This is just a snapshot, but you can see that the, that the grinder is spinning, it is working.
What, what does it do?
It, when...
Just curious.
I'll get to another picture in a minute that's a manual bar screen, and it's when large pieces of trash come into the plant, to the head of the plant, this piece of equipment pulls that out before it goes on through the treatment. And there's just lots of stuff that gets, that gets stuck in, in it. You would never believe the things that people somehow flush down their toilet that end up coming into the wastewater plant, very large items.
Have to go home and take a shower. Shouldn't have asked, right?
They also found that there was a gap in the, the manual bar screen, and I'm going to be very honest with you, I could not tell the difference between the before and the after picture. But this picture is the after picture, and what, what the deal was, was the, the screen had moved over to the left about a half an, a half an inch to an inch. It was not centered down the, down the, the canal that it, that you see there in the picture. So it was just a matter of loosening it up and moving it back into place. That was taken care of immediately, and we have added this to our daily checklist. Every day, they're checking that manual bar screen to make sure that it is still in the right location that it's supposed to be. The third item that was outstanding was that there were screenings in the, in the basin or debris, and that there was foaming. This is a problem that we've had, we have an ongoing problem with the foaming, and that is something that is going to be corrected when we get the new wastewater treatment plant online. So for now, what we do is we, we work as hard as we can to keep the foam down. At times, we have to actually skim it off with the vac truck, but that is a, a problem for our correctional steps. We have just resubmitted to them our compliance schedule, and they, they are fully aware of all the issues that we, we've gone through to, to try to get our bonds issued, and they are working with us. I don't think that this is something they weren't aware of, but the last time, when they came out, we had foaming issues as well. So when you get the same, the same issue twice, they're, they're definitely going to look at that a little more seriously. The next item, they stated that there was some weeds... that end up coming into the wastewater plant, very large items.
Have to go home and take a shower.
Shouldn't have asked, sorry.
They also found that there was a gap in the manual bar screen. And I'm going to be very honest with you, I could not tell the difference between the before and the after picture. But this picture is the after picture, and what the deal was, was the screen had moved over to the left about a half an inch to an inch. It was not centered down the canal that you see there in the picture. So it was just a matter of loosening it up and moving it back into place. That was taken care of immediately, and we have added this to our daily checklist. Every day, they're checking that manual bar screen to make sure that it is still in the right location that it's supposed to be. The third item that was outstanding was that there were screenings in the basin or debris, and that there was foaming. This is a problem that we've had, we have an ongoing problem with the foaming, and that is something that is going to be corrected when we get the new wastewater treatment plant online. So for now, what we do is we work as hard as we can to keep the foam down. At times, we have to actually skim it off with the VAC truck. But that is a problem for our correctional steps. We have just resubmitted to them our compliance schedule, and they are fully aware of all the issues that we've gone through to try to get our bonds issued, and they are working with us. I don't think that this is something they weren't aware of, but the last time when they came out, we had foaming issues as well. So when you get the same issue twice, they're definitely going to look at that a little more seriously. The next item, they stated that there was some weeds, and actually, it was our tomato plant garden and our watermelons out in the drying beds, that weeds do grow up there. In the wintertime, we don't really use the drying beds. We do use them sometimes in the summertime. The purpose of the drying bed, we also have a belt press that squeezes the water out of the sledge, because the amount we pay to haul sledge off depends on the weight. So you want to get all that, as much water out as you can. But in the wintertime, using the drying beds when it's wet and rainy doesn't really help to use a drying bed. So they will get weeds and things grown in there, and they did find a few, so that was, we pulled all the weeds out, and again, they have that on a weekly checklist now to make sure that weeds don't grow up in there. That's the other two drying beds. The final outstanding issue was that there was excessive scum and flock, and again, that is caused by inadequate treatment capacity at the plant. You can see the flock that's floating on the top of the clarifier here. We skimmed off as much as we could, but again, that is something that is just because we're beyond the treatment capacity of the plant. There's not a lot we can do about that. Quickly, I'll go through the other issues that they wrote us up for that were resolved at the time they came out. We kind of got a two-for-one on our ammonia-nitrogen excursion that we had in May of 2014. The sample result was 1.78 milligrams per liter. Our discharge permit limit at that time is 1 milligram per liter. So of course, it exceeded the permit limit, so we reported that in our discharge monitoring report as a violation. But we're also required, when the exceedance exceeds 40% of, goes 40% more than your discharge limit, that is an additional violation. So if it's above 1.4, it's a second violation, and in this case, it was. And there is a report form that has to be submitted. It's a water quality noncompliance notification, and it is for a reportable effluent violation. That form also was submitted to TCEQ. The next item that was resolved when they came out were, was unauthorized discharges, or what we call SSO, sanitary sewer overflows. These are very common. There are thousands and thousands of these reported all over the United States every month. It's usually caused by grease in your collection system, and it will cause a stoppage in the system, and sewage will overflow from a manhole. In the first case, the first SSO that we were written up for was actually at a lift station caused by a power surge. And the power surge caused our pumps to trip off, and we did not get an alarm, and some of the sewer went off over into the ground. The other, the next SSO was on April 7th of 2013, and it was a stoppage in a sewer line due to grease. And the final was an SSO in September, I believe, no, I'm sorry, August, and it was caused by, also by a line stoppage, causing an overflow at a manhole. The final thing that they commented on, it was not, it's not a violation, it is not even a requirement, but they did ask that we would start submitting our annual sludge reports to the regional office as well as to the Austin headquarters. So we have, of course, we will start doing that. That is the violation notice that we received, and rest assured, everything that we could possibly correct has been corrected, and we're, as of the end of this week, on Thursday, we will be taking the bids for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade. So we're really excited about that. We're actually headed down the road, we're going to start seeing things. You all will soon be getting an invitation to come turn dirt in our nice cleaned-out drying beds. We'll go out there with a shovel and turn dirt for our opening of our groundbreaking of our new treatment plant. Do you all have any questions?
I have one.
Jim?
With the upgrade to the new wastewater plant, will the issue with the grease buildup that caused the unauthorized discharges be addressed in a more ongoing way to minimize those unauthorized discharges? Or will that be another piece of equipment to be added later?
Well, that is in the collection system, out in the sewers, out all over the city. That isn't really at the wastewater treatment plant. And we do try to, we check the manholes regularly. We pump the grease that goes to lift stations. We try to go and collect that on a monthly basis. In the wintertime, it gets worse than the summertime, because you know, as the weather's colder, the grease solidifies. In the summertime, it kind of stays liquid and it goes on through the system. But to answer your question, no, the plant upgrade won't really help that, because it's when grease gets caught in the collection system, coming in from people's homes. And I can say that Trophy Club doesn't have the problems of some other areas that I've lived. I lived at the beach, and everybody goes to the beach, and they want to have a big shrimp boil, and then they, or a shrimp fry, and then they want to dump that shrimp down the sink. They don't realize that that leads to big clogs in the sewer system. So every collection system is going to have problems. In the city of Houston, a lot of restaurants cause problems. So Trophy Club, ours are really minimal compared to other areas, but I think you'll always have grease in the collection system, unfortunately.
Jennifer, oh, go ahead. Councilmember Ma.
I hear you're right, did you say you grow watermelons? Is that a metaphor for something else, I hope?
No, we really, watermelons and tomatoes grow in those drying beds. The seeds come through the system and they blow out into the area around. Any wastewater treatment plant you go to, you'll find lots of very organic fruits and vegetables.
Great for tea.
There's a little produce stand. They're opening a produce stand right next to the plant next year.
That's really the first.
I don't think that fits pure a tea.
Jennifer, thank you very much for coming and making the presentation, and glad that we're, the bids are going out this week, and look forward to hopefully those coming in under estimate and.
Me too.
Forward.
Me too.
There was one item I don't think was in your presentation, where one of the contractors did something that caused a spill. Is that right?
Yes.
I don't think that was covered unless I missed it.
No, that was not. Actually, that happened, that's the, like, the day after TCEQ came out for that inspection, the overflow that you're talking about, that's when that occurred. And it was a developer had installed a sewer line, and he did not, the contractor did not cover it well. And if you recall, it came a rain there at the end of January, and it caused that sewer line to float up and break. And it was under, where there was a big drainage area, it was basically under what looked like a lake. And it wasn't until the lake drained, it took us really two days to figure out where this huge flow was coming into the plant. We were, the guys were going all over town, both water and wastewater guys. I was out actually walking around with them, trying to see if we could find from manhole to manhole. When the lake finally kind of drained down, we saw this pipe sticking up. And as, upon further investigation, the pipe had broken, that lake had basically drained into the wastewater plant and flooded out the plant. So that is a concern probably for our next inspection. It was all reported, but they'll be looking at that next time, so.
Make sure it's corrected, right?
Yes.
Be a home over it next time, maybe, or something, who knows? All right, thank you very much. Anybody else have a question?
Did the developer wind up reimbursing the town for all the time and effort that went to fixing their problem?
Yes, we did receive a check from the contractor's insurance, and we're still working on him for an agreement. We are asking them to give us, to put up $35,000 for a period of at least three years in case we are fined at a later date. So we're working on that agreement with them right now.
Thank you.
Jennifer, thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thanks.
Sorry you had to wait, appreciate it. All right, Council, I'm going to go to item 13, because we have people that are going to be presenting to us there, and they've been waiting a good while. Consider and take appropriate action regarding the 2014-2015 capital improvement project, street reconstruction of Pebble Beach Drive, Timberline Court, Pin Oak Court, and Cypress Court, approving the authorization for professional services between the town, Teague-Nall and Perkins, and authorizing the town manager, his designate, to execute all necessary documents for professional services. So after the presentation from Tom Rutledge of Teague-Nall and Perkins, we will be looking for a motion authorizing the town manager to execute appropriate documents for the expenditures. Tom, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Council, and Stephen, glad to be here tonight. Mike Wilson's here with me tonight. Mike's my project manager on this, and we're going to team up a little bit on this presentation. We met a week ago today with staff to give them what we called a 75% review of the design plans. Back in, Stephen, you'll have to help me with this part, when we developed the CIP, I don't remember when we actually developed that budget, I think it's July, last.
July of 2014.
Last year. So July of last year, Stephen asked us to assist him in developing streets that Ed had identified that wanted to be reconstructed and approved, and develop budgets for that. And so we used the information we had available through aerials and town records and maps to determine what our best assessment would be for the cost of those. And so when we did that, we, I'll come back to this in just a minute. When we did that, we came up with a line item of several of the streets, and these are three of the streets, Timberline, Pin Oak, and Pebble Beach, that Stephen chose to be on this next round of streets. So what you have in front of you is what we show as, there's a column here of the estimated cost for those three streets. And those are our estimated costs based on the 75% design plans. And so we have actual quantities and design information that allow us to develop what we've determined are the current estimated costs. Of course, we haven't bid it, but we feel good about those numbers. The column to the right is the CIP budget, which Stephen had brought to council that you guys, that we're working off of. And so as we, you can see that based on our design estimated cost and what the budget number is, we're under the budget, which is always a good thing. And as always for you guys, as we're going through any design, we're always updating our estimates to see if anything comes up, and then we communicate that to staff. Then the second group there are the engineering fees that we developed there underneath the estimated cost as well. And so those are less, and the reason those are less, for a couple of reasons. One, on the engineering fees, what I learned as we went through this, for example, on the Pin Oak Court, we had budgeted in there to have some storm drain replaced. In the CIP, when we got in there and looked at it, storm drain's fine, and we don't have to do anything to the storm drain system. So that means our effort's less, and so felt like it was the right thing to do for us to adjust our fees accordingly to what our effort would be. And so that's why that's there. The topographic survey is a 4,000 less, because we're doing also for the mud, the water line replacements, and so there's some surveying in that that we moved into their contract to help share in that as well. And so you can see the bottom-line number, the total CIP cost and the estimated cost is 1.22 million versus the CIP budget of 1.323 million. And so I feel like we're in pretty good shape there on that.
I want to make a quick note, is Tom has refined these numbers since I sent mine out. So.
Yeah.
His are newer than mine, and so that's why if you see a discrepancy, it's because he keeps refining this, and those costs will continue to be refined as we continue going through this process.
Right, yeah, thanks for doing that, Stephen, I forgot to mention that. And we will, before we go out to bid, and I'll talk to you a little bit later here about the schedule, when we get ready to go out to bid, we'll do what we consider a final estimated cost of everything, because as we're going through design, we're always tweaking this, and there's things change through that.
So let me ask, can I ask one question?
Yes, sir, you bet.
So the CIP that we have in the budget, that is, that is including engineering, all of that? Right there? No, it wouldn't. It's different than that total. This is inclusive of engineering. So it is, okay, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Okay.
When we developed the CIP, Stephen asked us to put all the engineering and surveying costs and everything in there, so that this bottom-line number would be that total project cost for that.
I like it lower than what we.
And we, yeah, and naturally, we all do, and you know, and for us, you know, you sweat that a little bit, because we helped develop those CIP budget numbers, and then when you get into the design, you kind of hold your breath a little bit, hopefully we did a good job. So hopefully with this, we've got 100 grand here, we carry over to the next, and if there's something there that hopefully as we get through all of this, that means that this accumulates, and that you guys will have a savings through all of this. That'd be our ultimate goal. Anything else, questions about cost or anything? So I'm going to back up just a little bit then. So the streets, and I'm going to let Mike come up here in a minute and just talk to you about the other streets. And so we have, under the CIP, Pebble Beach is in here off of Indian Creek, and then there's Pin Oak, which is off of Trophy Wood, and then you go up a little bit to the north, and then there's Timberline Court. Cypress Court, then, was one that is, was not in the original CIP, correct, Stephen?
It was added later.
It was added to the end. And so I just broke this out separate, because that wasn't something we had in that original part. And this is a drainage improvement there in Hogan's Glen there in Cypress Court. Mike will show you some information on that of, there's drainage that's not staying in the street, getting into the system, and it's running down someone's driveway, and apparently a little bit of flooding issue there. So this was determined to add this to this package, trying to add small things like this to the package, so that you get a little bit of economy of scale with a contractor mobilizing and that kind of thing. So that's what we've got here on that. So I'm going to let Mike come up here, and want him to just go through some of the improvements that we're doing, and he can kind of present that to you, and then we can answer the questions that you guys might have on that.
Good evening. I'm going to walk you through the different projects we have, show you a couple of project photos, and then show you just an overview of the improvements that we have. First, we'll start on Timberline Court. A few project photos, as you can see, when they went out and identified these streets, they looked at obviously the deterioration of the streets. All the streets in front of you were built in the mid-'70s, and they've exceeded basically their design life for concrete pavement. This is actually at the end of Timberline Court, and then this is looking back towards Indian Creek Drive. You can see that the street department is actually already, if you look at that panel here, they've already replaced these panels previously, but they're still cracking, which is an indication of poor subgrade, potentially water getting in there, freezing expansion. So this street, definitely time to be replaced. Another picture, with all these streets, I will say, these will be total reconstructions, similar to what we're doing on Indian Creek. We will replace the entire street from right away to right away, including all driveways, repairing mailboxes and replacing those, as well as restoration of landscape and yards. Yes, sir.
Will this project also include replacing the subgrade to avoid having to go back like you just showed us and repeat what's already been done?
Yes, sir. All these streets will be per the new town standard, well, the updated town standards that have been definitely updated from the '70s. But it's a thicker pavement section and a thicker subgrade section, and they will either be lime or cement stabilized based on the soil conditions we encounter.
Just something real quick, so you guys know, you may hear lime is being used, or you may hear that cement is being used. Or you may hear that cement is being used. And as Mike mentioned, it's about what you encounter. So if you have very, if you have a lot of soil that's heavy in clay, you use a lot of lime. If you have a lot of soil that is heavy with sand, you use cement. And in some cases, you may have to use both. So I know on Indian Creek, we had a small section to where we were using lime. Well, we hit a patch of really sandy soil and we had to switch over to cement. And so that's sort of, with some of these streets, Especially where we are within the metroplex and being located next to a lake with a lot of creeks and everything, Sometimes you do get that sandy soil that's interspersed with a lot of the clay. So that's, if you hear that, if you want to know what that is, that's sort of why you use lime and why you use sand.
Correct. Thanks, Stephen. And Ed, Ed can attest to that project in the past, that Stephen said, Went halfway up with lime and then all of a sudden changed to sandy soils and we had to switch to cement stabilized subgrade. So.
I am just curious, with technology improvements being what they are, Will the service life of these streets be longer with new technology? Will they go forty years, fifty years versus twenty-five or thirty? What's the-
The typical design life of concrete pavement is generally in that twenty-five to thirty-year range. That's based on, they do it based on equivalent single axle loads or ESALs. And all the empirical data will tell you that a design life of a street is typically, A concrete street is typically twenty-five to thirty years. Obviously, maintenance comes into that. How well you maintain your streets, seal your joints, stuff like that. But that's the typical design life.
Thank you.
We sometimes anticipate some of these minor streets, like Timberline Court, Which is mainly just residential traffic. So it's just your typical homeowner that's coming through there. There's not, you know, you don't, it's not an arterial road. So I would expect a street like Timberline or Pin Oak, or you name it, To probably last much longer than, let's say, Indian Creek. Because it just is not getting the amount of traffic every single day That the kind of neighborhood off-streets are.
That's right. All the construction traffic, everything that goes down a major arterial. So just another picture here. So I'll point out the improvements here. As I said, we're going from backup curb to backup curb and constructing the entire cul-de-sac down to Indian Creek. We will be replacing driveways at all locations, as well as lead walks. And then repairing irrigation system and yards within the right way that are disturbed. Moving to Pin Oak Court. Once again, just a couple of project photos that you can see that the pavement's deteriorated. And to the street department's credit, they come out and seal these cracks on a routine basis To try to get as much life as they can out of these streets. Heading on-
Can you go back one slide? Just checking, okay.
Is that in the right of way?
Is that a legal sign?
So heading towards the end of the cul-de-sac, There, we're going to replace once again the entire thing, get to the layout. Let me back up one. This is the outfall at the end of Pin Oak Court. Basically, it drains through a curb opening and then out to T.W. King, is what it does. The improvements will consist once again of repairing the whole street. What I want to point out here is the drainage that Tom spoke about. In the original CIP, we had anticipated replacing the storm drain system From the end of the cul-de-sac all the way up to basically the paving improvements. When we went in and analyzed the existing storm drain system, It was determined that there is adequate capacity in that existing system. So the only thing that we did to kind of clean the area up at the end of the cul-de-sac Was rebuild and put, install a curb inlet there versus it going just through the curb. And then we're going to rebuild that head wall that's at the outfall there.
So can you expand on what it is that you all found that helped change your mind About needing to address storm drains?
What we did is, is when we do the CIP, we basically just come in and put-
Worst-case scenario?
Yeah, we think's going to go in there. From a paving drainage standpoint, if you're going to tear up the street, You want to go ahead and have money in there to put the storm drain. Because if you don't do it now, you're not going to do it for thirty, forty more years. When we go out and actually survey it and design it, We then put everything into our hydraulic models and what's called StormCAD. And we run the analysis and put all the area that's coming in there. And that tells us a more definitive answer of the system is either adequate Or it's undersized and we need to, and I'll elaborate that a little bit more on Pebble Beach Because we did find that was the situation there. So moving on to Pebble Beach, Working from the cul-de-sac and then heading towards Indian Creek. Once again, just a few project photos. As you can see, the pavement is severely deteriorated. Getting to Indian Creek there. So broken this up into two slides. Once again, the paving improvements are shaded there, all the way to the cul-de-sac. As far as the drainage improvements go, what we did is we, once again, we analyzed the system. And we got all the survey in. And I'm going to go forward one. What we did, the storm drain system, this is Pebble Beach right here. And what we did is we started analyzing the system from the outfall down here. And we analyzed the system all the way up to Pebble Beach. What we found is that the system is adequate from here to Pebble Beach. So.
Does the mouse point on there? That doesn't show up on that screen.
I'm sorry. Let me see.
Like if you move the mouse around-
Okay, right there. Sorry.
Can you do that? Thank you.
So we evaluated the system from basically, we evaluated this whole run of system. The outfall is here. This is Inverness Drive here. And what we found was that the system had capacity, this thirty-six and this leg of twenty-four Had the capacity to drain all of the areas over here on Pebble Beach. However, due to pipe slope, we did find that the system in Pebble Beach was undersized. So I'm going to back up to the previous slide. The existing system runs behind the curb on the west side And basically runs all the way down to here and then turns and goes towards the Inverness system.
So it's in their yard?
It's, yeah, it's in, it's in the parkway, that ten feet in their front yard. So in order, backing up a little bit to what we did on Indian Creek, When we evaluated that and we did that as part of the project that's under construction right now, We analyzed the system to use a parallel system to not, to get the most benefit for your storm drain. So what we did is the proposed improvements include leaving this system in place. And this inlet will reconstruct this inlet here. But then we're going to put a parallel system in place here to dry up the street Due to the system being oversized. Right now, per the models, in a hundred-year rain event, the water is out of the curb and it's ponding on those streets. So once again, this is the time to do it. And we, in lieu of coming in and ripping up their front yards more than need to be, We just decided to put a parallel system in to do that. But these will tie in down here and then it'll connect to the existing system there. That's the proposed storm drain improvements on Pin Oak, I mean, on Pebble Beach, excuse me. Moving to Cypress Court, as Tom mentioned, this was a project that was asked to be added in. The, there's an existing ten-foot inlet on this side of the road, As well as one on this side of the road. The drainage problem occurs as the water is coming down the street. It's coming to this house and it's topping this and getting down. And it's our understanding there's been water in this guy's garage.
In his house too, three times.
In his house too. Okay. So the overflow point was to come down the drive and then, and then run down the side yard. You know, due to overtime, that's built up and some of the capacity of that overflow swell has, has been taken up. So the proposed improvements that we're showing is to reconstruct these two inlets With larger inlets to create more inlet capacity. We've analyzed the pipe system here. The pipe has plenty of capacity. The inlets, we can add more opening at the surface and allow more water to come in To prevent the water from going over the, and into his driveway. So the proposed improvements would be to add larger inlets here, larger storm drain pipe here. In addition, we would add a twenty-four-inch pipe here And add an inlet up there to collect some of the water before it gets to his driveway.
So on the bottom right of our picture, is that coming down?
From Cypress?
From the gate?
Yes, the gate sits back-
Comes from Colonial and that area?
That is correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What I observed was that it was almost like the street slanted the wrong way. And on the right side of the street was higher than the left side of the street. And so all the water coming down Colonial basically just went to the left. And the inlet on the right never did anything.
This inlet right here?
The one up-
The other side.
The other side.
Oh, this one?
That one right there.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, there, the survey we got, it shows a very subtle grade change from this point to this point, Like three tenths. You know, the volume of water, it's going to top that-
Right.
Very quickly. So.
And I want to add something because just for council is that, yes, this is in Hogan's Glen. And the streets are private, but the storm drainage system is ours. So it is a storm drainage improvement system to that neighborhood. It's not a street reconstruction. It's simply a drainage project. And there's questions out there that that may have, that may be an issue. But the system is our system. It's not a street system.
So why wouldn't you capture the water up higher, kind of where your indication of north is? Capture that Colonial water and get it out to the lake from there As opposed to let it continue on down and pool? Maybe you can't do that, but. Yeah, okay, that's fine.
Yeah, we, we analyzed that. I think you're asking about putting the inlets up here. You know, we analyzed that and the bulk of your flow, while there is some coming off of Colonial, There is a large amount of flow coming from-
Coming up that part of Cypress. Yes.
Correct.
You have a lot of grade right there as you go towards the south.
Off those houses.
That's correct.
Right.
Yeah, these driveways are really, really steep in here and everything's coming to the front of those.
Okay.
So with that, I'll turn it back over to Tom and let him discuss schedule.
Can you go back to the Pebble Beach section for a second? Okay, that's good.
Okay.
So my concern, Tom, is on the left side of the picture Where the new storm twenty-four-inch pipe is under the road and then joins down there.
Right here.
What's the size of the pipe going out that I can't see that?
That's a twenty-four-inch storm drain. And you might not have picked up on it when Mike was describing that. The storm drain that's in Pebble Beach right now is an eighteen-inch. And it's real shallow and it's real flat. Now, why they did that, I don't know. That's why it's behind the curb, I guess, and not in the street, because normally you put them in the street. But that twenty-four-inch that heads out towards the Inverness system, It really falls off and is a lot steeper. And so you get a lot more capacity out of it. And so we, what we did is we analyzed it hydraulically and ran all the way up To make sure that the water stays in the system essentially. And so that's why we're not having to go between people's yards, thankfully, And tear that up or replace it and upsize it. So we're able to do that.
So the gray, or the lack of slope in the existing eighteen-inch Prevents it from functioning eighteen compared to twenty-four. I think where Nick was leading, where Nick was thinking was, well, I've got an eighteen and a twenty-four. But the eighteen's not really functioning at full capacity.
Yeah, that's right. And, and the things that we do engineering-wise, when we run, We run and computer models that have a hydraulic gradient line. You design a storm drain system under pressure. And so you want that hydraulic gradient to be below the grade. Well, this is like two or three feet out of the ground, especially with it being shallow. So if the pipe's deeper, you can put more pressure on it and get more capacity. So just then summing this all up on here, I didn't, I didn't really put the schedule on. We kind of worked with, working with Stephen. The idea, like with all of these street jobs, we try to take, we want to maximize our summer. And Ed's, you know, doesn't have anything else to do and doesn't want to take vacation in the summer. So we want to keep, keep Ed busy. So what we try to do is get these out to bid as quick as we can. So right now, we're looking to let it for bid on the twentieth, which is next month. And open bids on the twelfth of May. We'd be looking to come to council then to make a recommendation to award to a low bidder On May the twenty-sixth, council meeting. And then with that, once we do that, we would plan on having a citizens' meeting Because there's a lot of residents here that'll be inconvenienced because of construction. And especially these residential streets, this is going to be a real challenge for the contractor and for everybody. So we'd have a citizens' meeting on June the eighth In the evening to make it as convenient for everybody with the idea of starting construction on June the fifteenth. Stephen's asked us to see what we can do to kind of move that up a little bit. And so we'll see if we can work on that schedule some. The one thing that we do, do on this, as we did on Indian Creek, We have AC pipe in the water line, the old asbestos cement pipe. And so the mud is put in their budget to replace all of that with new PVC pipe. And so that way you don't have that old AC pipe breaking and tearing up your streets later. So we, we have a dual contract here, under one contractor, but they're dual contracts. And so we've also got to meet the mud board meeting schedule as well. So that's generally kind of our schedule. And then looking at this, one of the things that Ed's talked to our current contractor And we're trying to bring a contractor in during this, just to get benefit from a contractor's perspective About bit, construction approach, sequence of construction, traffic control and all that kind of stuff. And then time, what it would take. But we, but looking at it, we start construction in June fifteen. We'll be probably going, we'll go all through this year and then finish up the first part of next year.
So I'm glad Tom mentions this because a couple, a couple of different things is, One, logistically, this is going to be a very, especially Pebble Beach, Is going to be a very difficult reconstruction. There's, it's a, when I say long, it's relatively speaking, But there's no place to break it up from a logistics, there's no, there's no, The width of the street is not wide enough for materials. And so we've started talking about how do we phase it, how do we do it? And it's going to be inconvenient for those homeowners there, but they're going to get a brand-new street. And so we've talked about how do we phase it from one to the other, to the other? Do we, and I think that's where meeting with contractors will help to say, okay, what's the fastest way? What's the best way? And then we kind of look at it from that perspective. The reason I'm wanting to get going sooner rather than later Is to try to finish with as much construction as possible by the holidays, By the time we get to December. And so the more hot, dry weather we have, the better it is for us To try to finish as soon as possible. One of the ideas I had for the, for the town hall meeting with the residents Is to do something very similar that we did for the drainage projects on Fresh Meadow, Timber Ridge, Is to have, because if you have one meeting for all the residents, It kind of turns into kind of a free-for-all. So one of the things we did on those projects was we had stations. And they were kind of manned by one person. So, you know, Tom would be at one, Mike Wilson would be at one, you know, Ed, you know, Somebody else would be at these, kind of all these three spots. So if you live on Pin Oak, go to the Pin Oak section here in this, in this room with the map. So you can specifically talk to somebody about that particular project. If you live on Pebble Beach, you go to that section and you talk with that particular person And, or group of people about that and hear what they have to say, answer their questions specifically. And then towards the end, have kind of a wrap-up session. And, and that's so that you actually can answer one-on-one a little bit easier about questions. You can address problems. And then we can, because at that point, we hopefully will have a contractor. And we want to be able to have those residents meet the contractor, hear their concerns, Know the name, the face, the company, those types of things. So that's kind of where I'm starting to- So that's kind of where I'm starting to lean towards in terms of getting people notified, informed about this is going to come. And, and part of me says maybe we should have one before then. But, you know, eh, I, I know a lot of these folks are, are really quite interested in having their street done. Um, I, I know that they're, they're excited about getting it done. I don't think they know what construction means sometimes, but, um, it's kind of a short sacrifice for a really long time and it's to the benefit of their home.
Tom, anything else?
No, sir.
Counsel, any questions?
I'll make a motion.
Alright.
Make a motion to approve street reconstruction of Pebble Beach Drive, Timberline Court, Pin Oak Court, and Cypress Court. Approving the authorization for professional services between the town and Tignol and Perkins and authorizing the town manager or his designee to execute all necessary documents for professional services.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Lamont and a second by Councilman Perro. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote. All those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. No opposed, it is unanimous.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys, for coming. Alright. Counsel, I'm gonna take us back to our item one and two. And item one, discussion of agenda items posted for consideration on the regular session council agenda for tonight.
Kinda late for that.
Obviously, we've discussed most of those, but if somebody has a question about something else coming up, we'll deal with it. No one? Alright. Item two, discussion of agenda items posted for consideration on the upcoming regular session council agenda for April the fourteenth. And does anybody have any questions about that? I have a couple, but anybody else?
I have a question on, um, the baseball contract. Can, can we also get, and I've asked for this way back, but I never got it, but is there any possible way that we can get a breakdown of soccer as well? Just so as a comparison, uh, I, you know, they may not be as accurate as baseball, but just sort of where demographically we are and residentially.
Let me see what I can get.
On that line, did we ever receive the financials?
From baseball?
I think we did, but let me follow up with Adam and if not, then we'll ask John again for those.
Alright, um, there's an item that is, um, towards the bottom that says, consider and take appropriate action regarding minor site plan requirements as discussed at the February twenty-fourth, twenty-fifteen town council meeting. What's the minor site plan are we talking about?
So remember our discussion regarding the medical office building?
Okay.
And what constitutes needing to come back through plan review? Uh, what, what, eh, what options does staff have to approve certain things and not? And so we're working on that right now.
Okay.
And so the plan is to be able to bring that forward for discussion and feedback from the town council.
Which is really all plans.
That's right.
Okay, I thought it was something specific I was trying to figure out.
No, it, it's the general rules.
Yeah, we, we, we heard some suggestions and then we asked staff to consider and bring a recommendation back to us on how they wanted to amend the process.
Yep.
Um, there is, I have one little one, there's a, um, per the, uh, the Schaffner method on future agenda items. There's one coming up that I had put on a while back about, uh, our, uh, parking situations over by, over on Parkview and Park Lane over by Independence and Beck and all that. Um, if, uh, at this point, all we really need to hear is where is staff at? Are we ready to have a workshop on it or not? We don't have to, there's no necessarily ex- expectation to physically workshop it in two weeks. But I think going with Phillip's, uh, intention for this is it's a checkpoint to see if, if y'all have anything or not. And if y'all have any, you know, where we're at there, so.
I think, um, Chief, like, we'll be ready by then, don't you think? Yeah, we'll be ready.
Stephen, when we had that conversation, um, did you ever get the traffic counts over there in front of that?
Yes, I sent those to the council.
Oh, fantastic.
I'll, I'll resend.
And I reviewed those and.
And what I can do is what I'll do for that agenda packet is I will resend that, uh, so you guys have that.
Better give him a hard copy.
Can you give me a hard copy of that, please?
Yeah.
You used the email?
The beard, beard got in the way.
That was the problem with that surface, wasn't it?
Yes.
Is that when you dropped your surface and it broke?
It's gone now. It's gone?
What happened?
It was an internet outage.
I dropped it, it broke.
Yeah, if, if you, I can resend it to you if you want.
That's okay, I was just gonna say during that discussion, it would probably make sense to talk about it.
And that's, and we'll, we'll have that.
What's my point?
I'll provide that again to the town council, just as a good refresher.
So, eh, towards the bottom of the, that agenda is, um, deliberation with the town attorney and the town secretary. Are these evaluations that are planned there? And so for the town attorney, that's the annual, right? And, uh, for the town secretary, that's a X-month.
Well, you had asked me to, uh, go ahead and put that on there. It'd be like my six-month review because I think my probation is up in, uh, May. No, not May, I started in January, so June.
Same time mine's up.
No, it's not, it's really my six-month review.
It's not. And, and thank you, uh, Holly for reminding me. Part of the reason that I said let's do it is the, the council wants to make sure that, um, we're communicating adequately with the town secretary, she's doing what we're asking her to do, and so it's a time for us to have a dialogue. Nothing more than a dialogue is really considered there. It's not really an evaluation as much as make sure we're on the same page and what's she working on? Some of the things you're aware she's working on because Stephen has updated, uh, that for us. And, uh, I think one of your reports, Stephen, indicated an issue we had with a project that we had given her to deal with, a laser fish. Was that in one of your reports?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it, it'll be a chance to talk about that. Or, anybody house have anything for that agenda that's planned for our next meeting?
Yeah, I had a question on, when we have, when they, when we do budget amendments, what, what triggers a, what triggers that?
Well, there's a, a couple of different things. One of them, we, we typically try to do as, we, I don't, i- it's a lot of work to do a budget amendment traditionally, depending on what it is. And so, um, we try to do them twice a year. And so we're at mid-year and so we've got some things we need to clean up, such as like the TMRS contribution. We've got some other things that we need to put in there. So that's really what's triggering this is that we're mid-year, we know that there have been some changes and some things that we need to do. It's a good time to do it. We're also gonna have a mid-year report to you coming up about, uh, where we stand once we finish through the six months. So we'll probably be, I don't know if that's scheduled for the second meeting in April or maybe the first one in May is where we're gonna tell you, this is six months. This is where we're gonna be, where we think we're gonna finish the year. And the, and we'll traditionally do another budget amendment, uh, at the end of the year to clean up anything that we may have. Um, if there's anything that we know that's outstanding or has changed, we'll, we'll do that as well. It's, uh, there's not something that per se triggers it, but, you know, I, I prefer to do them a couple of times a year. You know, because we know that things happen, you know, here and there and if we can do it, um, it's a lot cleaner sometimes than doing a whole bunch.
Here's my question, last year on March third, we did one and developers' fees were seventy, seventy-four percent over budget at that point. Right now, they're three hundred and fifty percent over. So is that items that you clean up, things like that, or, or was that just a?
Well, well, what we would use those excess revenues for is if we have, you know, an excess expenditure. So we, we try to balance it by, by repla- you know, by.
So if not, if you don't have that, then you don't really do a budget amendment on that particular item.
Yeah, so I'll give you a good example. We have some TMRS savings from, from the change that we made to, um, our plan with TMRS. And you wanted to buy crosswalk flashers. Well, there wasn't something, there wasn't fifty-five thousand dollars inside the budget for crosswalk flashers. So what we will do is take the savings from some of that, we'll allocate it over for this line item. Because you have to be able to show that there is, that the expense, that there's a revenue with that expense. And so, you know, in this case, we probably were buying something with that. So we are reallocating it, I, I can't remember right off the top of my head right now. But that's typically why you do it is, I mean, if, if we exceed the budget, that's great. But generally, you're doing it because there's something that's come in that you need to offset.
And it was the pool.
Uh, the, that's right, the pool cost, yeah. Okay, so that's why.
Okay.
And that's an in-house policy, it's not, we don't have that in, uh, no state requirements, no charter requirements?
No, sir, no. It, well.
Well, our auditors will, will write us up if we, if we're over budget in a particular department.
Even at six-month interval?
No.
No.
At the end of the.
At the end of the year, because what they're gonna ask, even, even if we're, even if, let's say, a revenue was over considerably, they ask us about that. What changed? What happened? Um, you know, they're, they're really looking for these spikes. You know, I'll give you an example is that, uh, police, for example, um, sometimes certain shifts, you know, we alternate shifts and some of those officers tend to do more activity than other officers and so sometimes there's a spike. So every year I get asked and, and hopefully we won't, you know, why, why is this citation revenue this high? Well, maybe there was something that happened this year, so, you know, we were more aggressive on warrant roundup. And so, yes, we had more happen in this particular line item than in years past. They, they look for those kinds of trends. It's not just expenses that may have gone over, it may have been money that you didn't spend for some reason. It, and also goes for revenues. They may say, why do you have three hundred and fifty percent more? You know, why didn't you budget for this? What's, what's happening here? Or are you not capturing it someplace else in the, in the right location? So it's, it's sort of that big picture.
Alright, anything else about item two? Alright. Hearing nothing, we will then go past all the things we've already approved, item number twelve. Consider and take appropriate action regarding the updated strategy map with the Trophy Club Town Council mission responsibilities and priorities. Discussion of same. One of the, eh, notes I made was, um, given the, the design that's been done, we asked staff to kinda put it in a more pleasing presentation format. And so if you have any comments about that, it's time to offer those suggestions. And then I'm looking for direction, if you wanna replace the map in the back that's on the wall with something, would you like for that to, kind of thing to be done? So, we're looking for direction here.
Just one thing, April, can the arrows go up instead of down?
This was in April.
Oh, my apologies.
She, she helped a little bit, but this was John and.
Oh.
So, the, um, and, 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 and I got a couple of comments about, about the arrows. And really, one, and this isn't a criticism, but it's very wordy. And so it's hard to graphically, when you're trying to graphically show something that has a lot of sentences and things. So how do we capture this so that we can put it also in the budget book? How does it tie in to the CAFR, all those types of things? And so the reason the arrows are kinda pointed down rather than up is that you, that you, you think about your mission and your.
Each builds.
Each builds and it bleeds down to the next level. And so that's the top of the pyramid. But, you know, this is why we wanted it on there, is what ideas do you have? John came to me with about four or five and we ended up kind of hybrid-ing, putting a hybrid together for this. And so we definitely want your feedback.
I'll say that, um, my primary concern is the content and then the aesthetics have to achieve other, other ends that you're more sensitive to. So I defer to you guys in terms of the aesthetics. Um, but whatever it looks like at the end, I want it in place of that mess.
Yeah. Tim?
Yeah, I, I agree with you, it's a little wordy. Um, but the mission is, is a bit hard to read in this font.
Yes.
All capitalized.
Okay.
Um, either separate it or change the font or do something, but, I mean.
I think what's. My experience is all caps is hard to read.
Yeah, it's, it's difficult to read.
Well, I think they were keeping it the same as responsibilities, cause responsibilities just doesn't fit, you know what I mean? It's hard to fit that huge word in there.
Yeah, but it's just.
So then they kept this.
Oh, you're talking about the top font.
The top.
Yeah, the actual mission statement.
Thought you meant mission.
Get your foot out of your mouth.
Well, that's bigger than mission. Can we center the bottom a little better? Just, that's really critical, but.
Which way?
No, just center.
Vertically.
You know what I'm saying, like that center just.
Oh, yeah.
That's, that's really nitpicking.
Center within the cell vertically and horizontally. Just vertically, I think, is the issue.
Okay.
Can we put Nick's picture?
No, you can't.
Well, you're in the magazine.
You know, the one, the one thing that we didn't put on here that I wanted your feedback on is we have the Trophy Club Vision twenty-thirty. Are you interested in having that someplace on here or not?
I would say no.
Okay, alright, I just wanted to ask that question and.
Gonna have to get, refresh my memory for me to answer that. What is the twenty-thirty vision statement?
There, well, it's not a statement, it's just, do you wanna have it being twenty-thirty? There's the five residential, or the five pillars of.
Oh, right.
Premier residential community, uh, economic development, working intergovernmental relationships, kinda those big arching, big tier things. I didn't know if you wanted even the mention of the twenty-thirty on here or not.
I wouldn't think so.
I've al-.
I don't think so for me, but.
Yeah, I don't, I don't need it.
Okay.
I'd like a framed poster or a court board poster or something instead of that.
I, I, uh, one hundred percent agree.
Plexiglas, so somebody's.
No, we'll.
The, uh, the, in the principles section, the, uh, the sentence that says, we pledge to carry out our responsibilities, there's a typo on operating. You might wanna just mark that while we're, while we're talking about it.
I thought we did that.
Just, just from the visual thing, I know, I send this to Stephen, but.
The one in the packet was wrong, we caught that, that's the reason there's one at the diastate.
On, on the visual aspect, again of these down arrows, I know, I know the intent is to show one linking down to the next to the next. But again, when you first look at it, I, I was thinking just negative as I saw down arrows. And, and I'm always, uh, try to be upbeat and positive and going in upward momentum. Or at least can we put the arrows right and left on either side maybe so that they're expanding and growing and. Going down just looks negative. That's just my opinion.
Well, how about, how about we do one with arrows going up and arrows going down and I'll send it out to the council?
Great idea.
And.
What about right and left from either side?
That's, wait, wait, how you gonna fit it?
I don't.
You just turn one arrow left and move it to the left and put another arrow to the right and fit it in between.
Oh, I don't know what you're talking about. I'm okay with them down, but, but having one to look at, I'm fine.
If it's a, if it's a sticking point, something you could do if it's a sticking point is use maybe a different shape. That would, eh, allow you to illustrate the arrow, but then on the bottom one, have it make a right angle to go into the principles. I don't know, just.
Down, down.
If, if it really is a sticking point, that way it kinda just.
But we'll piddle with it a little bit.
Yeah, I mean.
Who's coming in to help John?
And so we'll, we'll kinda piddle with it and then we'll send something, um, out. And then maybe on the fourteenth's agenda, April fourteenth, we'll put it on consent. If there needs to be something that needs to be done, we can pull it off or something like that, if that works.
Great. Alright, item fourteen, town council liaison updates, discussion of same park and recreation board, March sixteenth. Uh, council liaison is council member Phillip Schaffner and citizens' financial advisory board, March twenty-third. And that didn't happen and, uh, Mayor Protem Lamont, so Phillip.
I was not at the meeting. I was at the EMS, uh, subcommittee meeting and the recorder did not work, so I didn't hear it. And Adam didn't send me a, uh, synopsis, so I don't, I have nothing.
Alright.
I, I think it was a very light agenda, that, I don't even think they had an agenda item other than updates.
And I think I saw emails, y'all didn't meet, is that right?
No, they did not.
CFAB didn't meet, so no report. Alright. Item fifteen, town manager Sodell's update regarding the following council discussion and input regarding same highway one fourteen and Soundwall extravaganza, discover Trophy Club magazine.
So, I had. So I had the opportunity to meet with Nancy Klein and her staff. Nancy Klein is our district engineer for TechStot. She's over Dallas County and we, because we're primarily in Denton County, it reports to the Dallas office. And she presented a preliminary plan for a sound wall essentially from the edge of PD 30 going east towards the Lake City Church of Christ. And then a second wall that would be from the other side of that towards the Vineyard Apartments. And, you know, I was very grateful to get the meeting, that they are listening to us regarding a sound wall. The concern I have is where they want to place the sound wall, which is within their right-of-way, which is really to, you know, within a few feet back of curb. And if you can think about that area, there's a large berm that almost runs the entire length. There are, there's an Encore electrical easement that runs through there, and then there's the homeowner's fence then subsequently behind there. I asked if we could grant them an easement to move it backwards because of the maintenance issue, not just from our perspective, but from Encore's perspective. There's also cell, a cellular data location there, and we're going to be looking at another one with Verizon. So I think that it's going to be critical for us to continue to work with TechStot, communicate our desires and priorities. We may need to have some assistance from Commissioner Eads, our county commissioner, with this process. I guess the good news and the bad news is that this project will be done with the Highway 114 lane additions in front of, in front of our community to expand it to six lanes. Ultimately, what they say is that 114 will be eight lanes, four and four. But that project is not supposed to be let until August of 2016. So we're about a year and a half, a little less than a year and a half out. So that's the good news, is that we have time to kind of address the sound wall. The bad news is, is that traffic congestion in front of our community as you try to head east and west is going to be, continue to be a challenge.
You say four and four, that's going to start in 16?
No.
Oh, that's three and three is 16.
That's three and three is 16, and then ultimately they'll, they'll come back and add another lane on each side, east and west. So, you know, I think the good news, I mean, one of the things I proposed is can we take out the berm? And can they use some of that dirt to at least try to level out the area? I've indicated that if there's no other option, that we would need access to be able to pull a truck, trailer, to be able to get in there to mow. I don't know how Encore would get in there, but that's going to be a challenge. The other thing is, is that I also indicated that I'm not crazy about the, the corduroy look that we have on the other sound wall that is heading west from Trophy Lake Drive, which ironically is all the way back against the homeowner's back property line. So I'm hoping that maybe we can make a good argument for that. But we wanted to, the sound wall panels to be aesthetically pleasing. So my proposal to them was that we would sit down with Westlake and kind of think what, what would look good for the corridor as we kind of try to beautify it. This is a good opportunity to, to address that. So this is something that's going to need to come to the, to the front burner here pretty soon. We'll reach out to Commissioner Eads and kind of let him know what's going on and ask what options do we have?
Stephen, since Encore is a player in this situation because of their easement, can we solicit their assistance or support and maybe?
Yeah, and that's.
Critical.
Yeah, they, they talked about, well, we can put removable panels in, and I'm like, well, that's not, that's not real feasible for us, you know?
A project.
Get a crane out.
Right.
A project of that scale done on the highway side of that berm would be a boondoggle. Would be a straight boondoggle, waste of taxpayer money.
And that's where it's almost, I hate to say it, it's.
It's like the default option.
Yeah, there's, it's not, it's not a good plan.
Yeah.
And I can say it till I'm blue in the face, and I think we, as a council, could say it till we're blue in the face. But it's probably going to take some assistance to get TechStot to listen that we would like it. Now, on the flip side, I, you know, Nancy was very kind. Her engineers were very supportive and informative, and they're willing to come and talk to us, which was nice. They offered to come to meetings and to present, and I appreciate that because that has not always been the case, so.
And when is this going to start?
August of 2016. So. Yes. Yes, it was supposed to happen very shortly. In fact, there were some thinking that it would already be under construction, and then it was going to be the spring, summer timeframe. And that has been completely pushed unless something happens between now and 2016 where there's funding that's freed up. But I doubt it right now.
I've already reached out to Andy Eads and the mayor of Westlake. Stephen will reach out to Town Manager of Westlake, and we'll try to coordinate. We'd already talked about having a meeting with all the stakeholders about getting funding from Metropolitan Planning Organization for 114 through Rowan Oak Northlake, which until that's done, our bottleneck will always continue. So several projects that we're trying to pull together.
Just a question, the Trophy Lakeside, is that on TechStot property? Just that it's narrow over there?
I don't think so. I think it's actually on our property. And that's really one of the issues, is that the way that it, that this area was developed, you know, forty years ago with the roads and the access roads is that that property behind those property owners' fences is town property. And now there's an Encore easement that runs through there, and we used to argue with TechStot about that they had the obligation to mow it.
Mow it, right.
But they, but they don't.
Do we mow behind the wall?
Yes, sir. And, and a lot of that is a very, it's a very labor-intensive because you can't get a mower back a lot of times on that backside of the berm because it's so steep that you're really going in with, with, by hand with a weed eater, and you're doing it by hand. And, and we've done that in-house, but we also tried to contract that out. And, and just because it, it's a big job, it's time-consuming, and if we can get a contractor to do that, then we sometimes do that as well. It just kind of depends on the schedule and what we've got cooking in town.
Do we have any ability to get Beck to remove that half-broken-down sign from the highway side of the wall that doesn't belong there?
That's on my radar. The, that's something that obviously is a sensitive issue because of the discussions that we've had with, with the Beck family. You know, the sign itself is actually a steel, those are steel posts. And so if you're going to, even in the heaviest wind, those posts aren't going anywhere because they're set, they're peered, and they're steel. So to actually have them, you're have to actually go out there and torch them off in order for that to happen now.
At least if you took the sign off.
We, we've gone through and, and as from a town staff, that, that part of that sign was blown down. We've gone through and picked that up and removed it, but there is that remaining piece. And so, yes, that's, that's a code enforcement issue that we're working on.
I'll try to reach out to the Regional Transportation Council member.
So let's talk about Extravaganza. That is this Saturday at nine o'clock, or nine AM at Independence East. We've had almost nine thousand eggs almost entirely donated by various organizations, primarily the churches in town. So they've been a great partner. I know the 30th anniversary is doing balloons and, and going to have a presence there, which is great. The event is from babies to 10 years old, and there are a couple of different ways they're going to be doing this in terms of, you know, kind of categories and keeping some kids separate, because my son would get run over by a 10-year-old who's crazed for some candy. But I think it's going to be a great, great opportunity to, you know, it's, it's really what makes Trophy Club great. So the Easter Bunny is going to be there, there is going to be some music and DJing. We have, as far as I know, we have put door hangers along the Royal Troon side to inform them of the event and that there would be noise on Saturday morning. So as far as I know, that has been done to notify them, so as an FYI, but it's a great, it's going to be a great event.
I will be there at seven AM, and I'm confident that several other.
At seven?
Seven AM, yes. And I'm confident that several other council members will be joining me.
Are you trying to get the candy before the kids get there?
Seven AM. Well, my wife is doing the balloon.
I was informed by my wife that I don't, that, that William doesn't get to bring his pretty Easter basket. I guess, I guess there's pretty Easter baskets and functional ones, but there's apparently a really nice one that I'm not allowed to use. And I guess we're going with plastic or something, I don't know.
Is the rumor true that Councilman Paro is the Easter Bunny?
I can't say that's.
Confirmed nor denied.
All right, moving on to the next item.
Discover Trophy Club Magazine, that hit mailboxes last week, and I think everybody should have seen it. I know that April did a really great job pulling that piece together. It, I think it's even better than the last copy that we did. We have about a sixteen, eighteen-month shelf life on that, and it's something that we're really proud of. I know that we've gotten feedback from a few residents that have found that the insert with the map for Trophy Club Park was, is pretty informative and they, you know, helps them if you've never been out there, at least it gives you some frame of reference of where to go. A lot of good information in there that, you know, it's something to be really proud of. So April did a really great job. It's one of the many things she does that helps kind of promote and, and talk about the town and get the word out there. So really appreciate the work she did, and it, and I think the residents really like it, and it's a good marketing piece.
Printer issue, right?
We did have a printer issue. They forgot a heading on a particular page, so they're giving us 2,400 free copies to make up for that, so.
Well, they're not, they're not free. They're, they're, he, he picked up the existing ones and is re-saddle stitching with a new page. So they'll be corrected.
Right, but we're not paying for it.
Right.
So other than that, that's it.
All right, Items for Future Agenda is item number 16. I have one item to add. I've had a request from the Mud President, and Stephen has been corresponding with Jennifer. And, and so I want to put that on our future agenda discussion is consideration of the transfer of assets to the Mud that typically would have been transferred to them when construction was completed and have not been done so. And there are some issues trying to attempt to do that. So if you'll add that to the future agenda, consideration of infrastructure assets being deeded over to the Mud so that we don't forget it. You got notices today about the Mud saying, let's have maybe a joint meeting at some point. That may be one of the items they're wanting to discuss. And it, it really is an issue of time to deal with it. It's going to require some legal research, it's going to require some effort to deal with that, and everybody's been very busy. So it's not an item that I see moving very rapidly. The infrastructure's not going anywhere, and some of it hasn't been transferred for years. So we'll, it's just so we don't lose it as an item. Anybody else have anything to add to future agenda or to remove?
Yeah, I have a question. I'm wondering if we should, should we take back the, the ordinance, the animal control ordinance? Because I, I haven't seen any activity on, on, on that. And I, well, anyway, I just wonder if we should take that back? Or do we have an update on that, or do we know where it's at?
The last update we had was when we gave it to the board, to the Animal Control Board.
Anybody else have an item to remove or add? All right, hearing none, we will then move on. In just a moment, we will go into executive session. Item 17, pursuant to the Section 551.072, deliberations about real property of the Texas Government Code, annotated Subchapter 551, Texas Open Meeting Act. The council will enter into executive session in order to deliberate purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property where deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body in negotiations with a third person, potential sites for location of new police and town hall facility, annexed building, and potential lease of property. It is 9:10, and we are in executive session. Council, if you want to take five, 10 minutes, council will come to order. It is four minutes before 10 PM. Last item is consideration. Can't even say it. Consideration and take appropriate action regarding executive session. I have a statement to read. Currently, we are in the process of purchasing land along Trophy Wood Drive. The property borders Trophy Wood Drive and goes back to TW King Road and adjacent to part of the Holiday Inn. Over the next few months, council will host town hall meetings to present our plans for the town hall and police building, seeking citizen input. The general plan is to be able to call for a bond election in August for the November 2015 ballot, which would allow citizen approval of a tax bond to finance the construction of the joint town hall and police facility. We look forward to your involvement in this process as we design and construct a new facility that we all can be proud of and would last for many years. That's the end of the statement. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Greg Lamont moved, seconded by Paro. All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign.